Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the November 28th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Evening. Tonight, we have Mr. Bowen to my left, myself, Jared Chadwick to my right, Ms. Whiteside, Mr. Slavin, and Mr. Bessie. Absent tonight is Mr. Sullivan.
Excused tonight, actually. Okay. Pledge of Allegiance. I think Jared should do it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We are here tonight for a dog hearing in the name of Calvin Carnes. And I'm going to ask that I have a motion to open the hearing, and then I will turn the hearing over to Attorney Bowen.
Okay. Second?
Okay, move to open the hearing. Is there a second? Yes. Is there any discussion about opening the hearing? Hearing none of go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, the hearing is now open. Mr. Bowen, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Is Mr. Carnes here? Mr. Carnes, why don't you come on up forward? And is Ms. Cludier here, please?
Yes, she is.
Excuse me?
Devin, why don't you come on up? Does everybody have a seat? I'll start by reading the notice. It's just a notice right here, Madam Chairman. Oh, you have it right there.
May I borrow that?
Jared, thank you. This is dated October 23rd, 2023, sent by certified mail to Mr. Calvin Carnes. Dear Mr. Carnes, in accordance with provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 of the General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held before the Select Board on Tuesday, November 28th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. regarding a dog owned or kept by you. Please find attached a complaint letter from the Wareham Animal Control Officer. If you require more information, please let me know at your earliest convenience. Hearing will be held at the Multi-Service Center, Room 32048 Marion Road. Your attendance is required at this hearing in order that your interest be properly protected. Sincerely, Judith Whiteside, Chair. Mr. Carnes, did you receive this notice?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. So everyone who intends to testify, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Mr. Carnes, you're probably gonna testify, so thank you. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, may be seated. So what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna ask the Animal Control Officer, I know Devin, the Animal Control Officer to summarize why we're here, and then we'll ask Mr. Carnes just to summarize what his reaction is to what the Animal Control Officer has had to say, and then if we need to get into some more detailed testimony, that's what we'll do. But at least let's get an idea for the board of what it's all about. So Devin, why don't you just give us a summary of why we're here?
So a brief summary would be back on, in October of 2019, Mr. Carnes, the dogs owned by Mr. Carnes were deemed a nuisance by the previous Animal Control Officer, and certain restrictions were placed on the dogs to be not left outside unsupervised, have limited outdoor excursions, you know, use of reasonable measures, including bark collars, muzzles, things like that, to prevent the dogs from running loose, from barking excessively. And over the past year and a half that I've been with the town, Mr. Carnes has received numerous citations and offenses for not only the dogs barking, but the dogs being loose at early mornings, early hours of the morning, and throughout the days. We've talked about different actions that he could take to remedy those situations, which none of them have proved to be effective, and I still, since stating this notice and sending this notice out, I have still received complaints about Mr. Carnes' dogs.
All right. So just to summarize, the dogs were previously placed under order. Nonetheless, there's, they're, you're alleging that they're still getting loose, they're still barking, creating a nuisance to the neighbors, and you're getting calls. Mr. Carnes, do you have anything you want to say just in response to that introduction?
Yeah, well, the dogs, the dogs bark pretty much in the morning, sometimes, and I mean, I don't think they bark that often in the morning. I'm pretty cautious about it, because I'm aware, obviously, that, you know, it annoys my neighbors, you know, and I do the best I can to keep them quiet. You know, I work sometimes late when I come home. Soon as I come in, they bark. If someone's driving down the street, they may bark, because obviously, they're very protective, you know, of the house, and they bark if they see a car, you know, I think that's sort of normal. If I'm home, no, at that time. I hear that they're barking if I'm not there, but when I'm home, we try, we do our best to control them, and we do, we control them in terms of the barking. But I mean, you know, then we live in a wooded area, there's squirrels, there's all kinds of things outside, and, you know, if they see a squirrel, they're gonna bark, and that's part of it, you know?
What kind of dogs are these?
Cankorses.
Oh, okay.
They're Cankorses. And it's a mother, a daughter, and a son, you know, it's like a family, you know? So, you know, we have bark collars, I've tried the bark collars. They semi-work, and then they don't work. I mean, you know, they're fairly expensive. We didn't get something that's gonna be really cheap, so we got something that we thought that was gonna do the job. They have to be charged up, we charge them up, put them, put them on there, and, you know, and it's, for some reason, they, sometimes they still bark. You know, to address the getting loose, my neighbor helped me build a fence in the backyard, and there were some areas in the fence that was loose, I guess, it just wasn't sufficient enough, so the time they got out, it was because the fence was, you know, they're big dogs, and I guess the fence needed more, more work, so we had to go back to the, to the area, find out, find out how they got out, and then we reinforced that area. And then I got, they got out again, and it was a similar situation. The fence is, it's a pretty large fence, it's probably, probably about 30 by 40-foot area in my backyard. And, you know, I bought all the fence, part of it's wire, part of it's stockade, and now we have it to the point where we think it's secured enough that they won't get out, but even, even on top of that, I also added a leech, a run leech. So, because the bigger one, the biggest dog, he's the one that, he's the one that actually gets out, the other one just follows.
Are they diggers or jumpers?
Huh?
Are they diggers or jumpers?
They, put it this way, they like, just knock it down.
They're more like bulldozers.
They don't jump, they don't jump, the fence is six feet, so they're not gonna, they're not gonna jump over the fence, but.
Yeah.
I put a run out there, so I, because now I said, okay, I can't trust them, even in the yard, so if I, if, I don't even let them out there that much anymore, but, because of that, that problem with them getting out. So I put a leash on them, so now, even if he's in the yard, he can't get out, because he's gonna have a leash on him, but then I see he's getting tangled all the time, so I just, I don't even put him out there anymore.
Sure.
So recently, we haven't had a problem with them getting out.
Before I turn it over to the board, let me just ask, have, have you and the Animal Control Officer had a chance to talk about a possible resolution to this?
We spoke, yeah, we spoke. I mean, any recommendations that they make, I do my best to try to follow them, you know, and I'm not gonna ignore it.
So Devin...
They know the dogs.
Before I turn this over to the board for their questioning, how, how would you see this being resolved?
Not leaving the dogs outside between the hours of, you know, 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. unattended at any point.
10:00 p.m., 7:00 a.m., okay, yep. Anything else?
I would say that's probably the biggest one. Most of the complaints that I've received are the dogs being outside in the yard, barking from usually between 2:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. They're just left outside to bark.
Is that when you get home?
2:00 a.m. in the morning?
Yes.
Is that when you're getting home from work, or?
Occasionally, but I don't, I don't put the dogs out like that. There's, there's pretty much, there's maybe one dog, the mother, I let her go out in the front, but the other two dogs, I just let them go on the back porch for a brief period of time, do what they have to do, and they don't, they don't stay outside like that. That's may have been one or two occasions that that happened, but that's not like no regular thing.
Makes, just makes me...
No way at 2:00 in the morning that it's gonna put them out.
Just makes me wonder if, you know, when you, when you get home, the dogs are happy to see you, they're excited, you know, plus they gotta go. I was just wondering if maybe taking them out one by one on a leash is maybe the way to go, rather than just, okay, everybody out into the yard.
No, no.
I know my dog would be very noisy.
Very seldom do I let all three of them go out in the yard, and they're definitely on a leash at that point, you know, they, they have a run. But that's rare, I don't, I don't let them out that often. That may have happened a couple of times, but they're not gonna be outside at 2:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
You know, there's just not, I mean, occasionally I do come in late, so I have to let them out.
Well, you heard Devin's recommendation.
Yes, I did.
Do you have any issue, you have any issue with that?
No, no, not at all, no.
Well, Madam Chairman, I...
I'm trying to do my best to comply.
I think at this point, I'd like to turn it back over to the board, because you may have some questions that, you know, I think we have a general understanding here, but the board is the one that makes the decision.
Thank you. Do any of my members have questions?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
First question I'm gonna ask is, so this goes back to 2019? And did you have all three, did we have all three dogs in 2019? What were their?
19, yeah, yeah, they're five years, they're five, about that.
How old are the dogs?
Yeah, five years old.
Five years old?
Yeah, the mother, the mother's eight, and the other dogs are five.
So my biggest question is, is why are the dogs still not licensed?
Why, excuse me?
Why are the dogs still not licensed?
Well, I've had, they've been licensed before, that's a yearly thing, and right now, I'm...
Excuse me, the dogs are not licensed, is that correct?
Nope.
That's the, I'm looking at the last citation, and it was for three unlicensed dogs.
Thank you.
So, so why are they not licensed?
Well, quite frankly, I actually forgot that I had to do that.
Well, the, the town sends out notices every year, right?
No, no, no.
They don't mail out notices for...
I don't get notices, no, no, there's no notice.
I would like to say, our last interaction, I did give him 14 days from the time that we spoke to get the dogs up to date on their vaccinations and licenses, and the citation was issued after the 14 days of noncompliance.
When was that?
Yeah. And you're also telling me the dogs do not have their inoculations or vaccinations. What about their rabies certificate?
I do not have proof of that without the license.
So my, my concern is, is that, I mean, we have a long history of complaints, currently not licensed, don't have proof of any of the vaccinations, and you have a breed of dog that is known, could be very dangerous, getting out of the house, getting out, you know, knocking down structures that you've built, and it's very concerning, because this isn't a, this isn't the first time that you're before the board for issues, and now you're before us again with the issues of nuisance dogs, but now we're even deeper with no licensing. And it doesn't even sound or look like there's been an attempt to get these dogs relicensed, because from what I'm hearing from the Animal Control Officer is that the citation wasn't issued until after the 14-day window she gave you to correct the violations. And this was, let me just, this was back in October, and here we are going into December, and nothing has still have been done. Why?
Well, financially, it's just pretty tough to, you know, to, you have to register three dogs, you have to get the vaccination for three dogs. I'm, I am working on it, though, and I just need a little bit more time, and I can make that, I can get that done, I mean, a lot sooner than...
I mean, you've had, you've had time, you've had a lot of time.
Well, I'm asking for more time. I'm asking for time now, I'll get it done, I can get it done. I'm asking for time. I'm asking for more time. I didn't have the money, it's, it's, it's a financial thing, it really is.
I get it, but...
I have to get it, I know that, I understand that. Dogs are not, they're not, they're not aggressive, they're not like, this is, I mean, they haven't went after anybody and nothing like that. When they get out, they just wanna run, that's it, that's all they wanna do. But I understand that I need to get that taken care of.
I mean, because if I'm looking at all the fines that you've gotten, all the fines are a lot more expensive than the vaccinations and, and getting them licensed.
Right, they are, and I think the fines are unreasonable, but...
But they're not, but they're not based on, you know, how many, how many times...
Have they been paid? Have the fines been paid, Ms. Cludier?
As far as I'm aware, they have been.
Thank you.
So if we can pay fines, we can pay to get them registered, we can pay to get them vaccinated, we can pay to make it compliant.
I'll get it, I'll get it done, I'll make sure.
That's all I have.
Just give me some time, give me, give me, give me a couple of weeks, I'll have them registered.
Excuse me, Mr. Carnes, excuse me, Mr. Slavin.
I don't have much patience, the last hearing we had, I was kind of, I guess the best word is, I was easygoing on it, and unfortunately, it didn't work out very well, because the dogs went and attacked a small dog and almost killed it. I've always felt that the owners of the dogs are responsible for 99% of the problems. In this case here, we've had this come before us in 2019, using the excuse, you can't afford for, you really shouldn't have the dogs in the first place. The Animal Control Officer is basically, you know, gone there constantly, warned you, asked you to do things, you're required to license the dogs, you're required to do these things, we have no provision of a rabies shot, which if someone actually got bit, it could be a real problem. Mr. Bowen, on fines and stuff, is there a limit as far as what we have? Because this is a case, in my opinion, that is a scoff law virtually, that he's told to do things and he's ignored it. I can't have any sympathy at all at this point for any of this. There's no excuses anymore.
Well, through you, Madam Chairman, the fining agent, if you will, would not be the Board of Selectmen, it would be the Animal Control Officer. And the Animal Control Officer can fine in accordance with the schedule in the bylaw. Do you know what that is? Could, and Devin, you'll have to help me out, I don't recollect the exact dollar amounts, but I know it's...
Yeah, the exact dollar amounts are gonna slip my mind right now, it's up to...
A hundred.
Well, for, in mass general law, it can go up to, I wanna say it's $500 for the loose dogs. And, I mean, in accordance with mass general law, just the violation of the nuisance dog order back in 2019 would have been to seize the dogs versus the citations, which we did discuss at our last interaction.
But just to answer your question, Al, and I think each ticket is a separate fine.
Yes.
I'm looking at this, it looks like one person in particular is Morrison, whatever's issued most of the complaints, and...
Yes.
Who's here, which hopefully will come and talk to us as well. In my opinion, at this point here in time, to be easygoing about this or to be conservative is not working. The idea of not getting a dog licensed, just, you know, and being told you have to, is just not acceptable. I'm just going, again, this is, for me, this is like a 180, but I would fine the person the maximum allowed daily until the stuff is complied with, never mind just one fine. And I really don't think the person deserves to have dogs or control them, because it's like, I don't care, I don't have to do anything, and I'll use whatever excuse I come up with. You can't blow somebody off, sir, for four years and not do things. You came before this Board of Selectmen, I was here, obviously, and you've done nothing. And it's like, I'm gonna, give me a few more days, I'll take care of it. You've had four years, it's not acceptable. Either the dogs get seized and hopefully given away to somebody and not destroyed, or you fine this person the maximum amount daily. Thank you.
Yes, Ms., yeah.
Go ahead. You know, earlier I'd asked anybody who was gonna testify to raise their hand.
Yes.
Part of that is not just to swear people in, but also for me to get an idea who out there might want to speak. A lady in the front row did just put up her hand, and if she was gonna offer testimony, I didn't wanna cut off her opportunity to speak.
Well, if there's anybody, if there's anybody here who would choose to speak, they need to step, they need to stand up and be sworn by you, sir.
Yeah. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm not gonna listen to her yet, I'm gonna, yeah.
We have another, same for you? Thank you.
Mr. Chadwick?
First off, I wanna tell you, I know I said it last time we were in here, I love dogs, those dogs, they're beautiful. I really don't necessarily agree with taking the dogs from you because of their age, and there's no guarantee that they would be found another home because of their age. But once again, we've been dealing with this since 2019. Next week in Sandwich, December 9th, $20 a dog to get them vaccinated, and how much is it to have a dog licensed?
It's less than $20 per dog, it depends on whether or not they're fixed.
Whether they're neutered or not, yeah.
I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, you got, yeah, Christmas is coming up, I'd say 60 days, and I know some other people don't want to, but I'd say 60 days, here you go. You gotta have your dogs vaccinated, licensed, and if not, I'm sorry, it's four years. And, I mean, three dogs, so under 100 bucks. But like I said, I'm only one person on this board. As for the barking, I know muzzles are, I don't like muzzles, I'm not sure, you might be able to answer this question for me better, but is the ban that they have around considered a muzzle or humane?
So there's the ban as a gentle leader, that's used for like guiding dogs, is like the collar would be, a muzzle is strictly for biting, there's no humane way to use a muzzle to prevent barking. The best alternative for that would be a bark collar on each of the dogs.
Okay, have you tried the citronella bark candle, or bark, not, not candle, the citronella bark collar?
No.
I've heard from a lot of people that have used those, I guess that irritates the dog's snout, and it's more humane than using the electric ones or the vibrating ones.
What is it called?
It's, it's, what it does is, when the dog barks, it shoots out a citronella, like oil, out.
Oh, yeah, I've heard of it.
And I've seen them on dogs, and every time that happens, dogs instantly shut up.
I'll try, I'll try it, I'll try it, I'll try it, whatever works, I'll try it, because the, the one I have is a vibrator, it has two pins in it, it sticks right in their neck.
I've seen those.
You have to charge it up, one that goes, charge it up, I have, I have three of them, I have one on every dog.
They get a lot of rolls of fur or muscle.
Yeah, yeah, they have the, they have the bigger pins for it. I mean, I can, I'm pretty sure you can just find it right on Amazon.
I'll find it, I'll find it, try, I'll try it, I'll definitely try it.
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Carnes, I was at the previous hearing as well, as Mr. Slavin, and I remember all of the testimony from that, and I remember exactly what the complaints about the dogs were. You say that they are not barking in the middle of the night. I have a 3:00 a.m. complaint, I have a 2:19 a.m. complaint, I have 1:19 a.m. complaint, a 1:35 a.m. complaint, 1:58, excuse me, I'm speaking, 1:58 a.m. as well as 3:18 a.m. So I have to doubt that the dogs are under your control. The dog officer, the Animal Control Officer, has been more than patient, in my opinion. I noticed that you've paid a fine of 50, and one of 100, and that one, another one of 50, $300 one. Okay, so Mr. Bessie has already addressed the fact that you have spent a lot of money ignoring the law and ignoring the order. The order in 2019 was very specific. I remember the hearing, believe me. So I have virtually no patience for your situation, sir. Ms. Cludier has a reputation of being a very humane Animal Control Officer. She tries to work with all animals, owners, and she does a very good job of helping people understand what they're supposed to do. You've ignored her and her predecessor. So the fact that the dogs, when, when was their last rabies vaccine?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
When were they last licensed, sir?
It could have been two years ago, could have been, I have to double check my records.
I have no more questions than Mr. Carnes. If either of the two people who were sworn in choose to speak, I will have you come to the, now...
Can I respond to what you just said?
No, no. I will have either of the two individuals who chose to be sworn in, if you would choose to address this board, please come up and sit next to Ms. Cludier, and you would have to identify yourself for the record. Yep. Just hang on one minute, okay?
All right, just, just real quick, so I found them on Amazon, five-star, 300 bought in the last month, $40, so for under $250, your dogs are vaccinated, bark collars applied, and licensed.
Okay.
Would you identify yourself for the record, ma'am?
Yes, is this...
Yes. If there's a green light, you're all set, okay.
My name is Patricia Morrison, I live at 14 Barrett Way, right across the street from Mr. Carnes, and let me state one thing, I am not here to have these dogs taken away from Calvin. I am here especially because of the barking, and I'm the one that sent those messages at that time when they were barking. I know you're a hard worker, you come home late, especially lately, or the last six months or whatever, and I don't know if you go in the house, but I know that you leave a dog outside and the dog barks. I called you September 21st at 3:12 a.m. in the morning, and was very vocal about, give me a break, Calvin, the dog is waking me up again, and I cannot get back to sleep. I've tried talking to you about this many times, and you're very nice about it. It's always, yes, Trish, I understand, I am sorry, it won't happen again. You never give me a hard time, but it keeps on happening. I don't know if you go in the house and just leave the dogs, the dog, because I only hear one, outside, but I wouldn't be calling you at 3:20 in the morning or 3:12 in the morning just to say hi. The dogs are sometimes left out front of the house, and you're right, when anybody walks down the street or drives down the street, the dogs start barking, they're up on their hind legs, I'm afraid of those dogs. When I come out of my yard and go to go up the street, last week or the week before, I had to call my son out of the house to stand there so I could walk up the street, I got a ride back, because I was afraid to walk down the street. Now, I'm not saying they'd bite me, but if they got loose again and jumped on me at 80 years old, I'd probably end up in a nursing home, which I don't wanna do.
Ms. Morrison, I'd ask you that you address the board.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Very sorry. And like you've all said, this has been going on for many, many, many years. I've tried to be patient, but I'm at my wits' end, as I've said many times to Devin, poor Devin, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. The gentleman in the blue, do you choose to address the board? You would have to identify yourself, sir.
I am Andrew Gallagher.
Thank you.
Barrett Way. And I would like to just testify that I'm the guy who built the fence, and the escaping dogs was my fault. I nailed the board on top and skipped it, didn't nail it on bottom, there was a door like this for the dogs, they found it. I went back, I nailed it. A week later, they got through another hole in the fence, which I kind of ignored to begin with, because it only led to under the porch, and the porch was fenced in, or so I thought, but no, it wasn't. They got through that little hole, and they found a way out from the fenced-in porch, and apparently the dogs are smarter than I was, because I didn't think they would ever get out. get out from under the porch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
So, I should have paid my.
Thank you. Raise, yes, step forward, please, and identify yourself. And wait for Mr. Bowen to swear you in, please.
You swear to tell the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody, good evening today. My name is Kayla Carnes, and Calvin is my father, I'm his eldest daughter, and I'm one of his kids that lives in the state.
Can you spell your first name, please?
K-A-Y-L-A.
Thank you.
Don't touch the mic with your face, you're too close. She's still my daughter.
Yeah, and that's really why I'm up here. All of his affairs, I really try to help him out, I'm, we're here, a couple of family members are in the back, and I help him with, I will help him with trying to find the Amazon recommendation that you, that you mentioned. I will be helping him transport the dogs, going to and from the vet, whenever they need stuff, you know, we take them for baths sometimes, and I just wanted to testify that anything that he will be doing with the dogs, I will be helping with, and especially with the recommendations and the things that you had mentioned, I will be helping him just manage the process of getting them licensed and all the paperwork and stuff, so, I know that it has been a very lengthy process, I've, this is the third hearing that I've been to as well, both of which I've come and said I will be helping him, and, and I, we did that, I know that he complies with everything, the first time or the first and second time, it was a noise thing, he does get the collars, you know, we helped him purchase those things, and as far as transporting them to getting their vaccines and all those things, I personally will be helping him to do those, and I just wanted to testify to say that he will have assistance and, and help to get that taken care of.
Thank you, Ms. Carnes.
You're welcome.
Before you guys leave at the end of the meeting, I will find you guys the paperwork that I found online about the vaccination clinic, and I will also share with you the citronella bark collar.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Any other questions from my board members or comments?
Uh, since it's been brought up, that this is not your first time here for your father, why should I believe anything you're saying? Because we're back here again, and you've said in the past that you would help him, hold on, let me, let me finish first, please. You've said in the past that you would help him, and you're saying that you have helped him. Well, if you have, why would you have allowed him to get to this point of not becoming compliant before he's sitting back in that chair again tonight? Why wait?
That's a great question, Mr. Bessie. The first few, the first couple complaints were noise complaints, and that's what we took action against?
Actually, they were, the complaints originally included the escaping, because I remember having to order the fence being built, I was there, I remember that hearing, so, to your point, sir.
Well, to respond to that, I would say that my knowledge of it was that it was a noise complaint. I remember Ms. Patricia coming in, or someone coming in and saying something else about being, there was another point that was brought up that wasn't a part of that complaint, and I know that she was redirected to say, hey, we're only here for noise, so that is what I responded to. So, my answer to your question is, from my knowledge, it was more of a noise complaint. I actually didn't know about the non-compliant stuff, and.
So, I'm just.
I have my, I'm, I'm 32 years old, I know I look a little younger, but I have my own life, and I try with everything that I can to help with his affairs, I can't keep track of every little detail, but I know that, that with the, with the noise stuff, we have really been trying to help, we've put cameras inside of the house for him, that he can look at the dogs on his phone and things, but, you know, now that this is being brought to our attention, again, I, I fully acknowledge that there have been, you know, some violations stacked up against him. I personally will help him get through the other things.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie?
No, I just need to stop.
Okay, Mr. Slaven? Okay, may I have a motion to close the hearing, sir?
So moved.
Is there a second to that motion to close the hearing? All those in favor of closing the hearing, say.
Aye.
No, Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is now closed. I'm going to remind my fellow select board members that we were in a similar kind of situation not too long ago with some dogs that were not vaccinated, were not inoculated against rabies, among other things, and within.
Madam Chairman.
I know, okay.
It's not in evidence.
It's not in evidence. Let's see. I'll ask for a recommendation from my board members.
I'd like to make a recommendation.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
All right, my recommendation is to work with Ms. Cludier, number one, number two, you have 60 days to comply with the things that we talked about after that. I honestly hate to say it, we've given you four years. It's, it's time. If it's not done within 60 days, the fines need to be paid, and the dogs are gonna have to find a new home.
So, is that your motion?
Yes, I hate that, and I'm sorry.
It'll be done.
Is there a second to that motion? I will call one more time for a second to that motion. The motion fails, I will accept another motion. Mike, Mike.
We haven't heard your actual final recommendations on your end.
I, I would recommend at this point, I wouldn't go as far as the 60 days, I would only go with 30 days as a maximum to have the dogs meet the requirements of licensing and vaccination. They are not to be left outside at any point between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, unattended, leash walked individually in the morning when you come home to go to the bathroom. That would be it, and the use of the bark collar if they are outside, unattended during the daytime, in the fenced-in yard.
Thank you.
My next question is, if there is a violation of what you've put together, at that point there, do you seize the dogs? If we make that recommendation?
Yes, thank you.
I would go in that direction.
Is that your motion?
My motion would be 30 days, and, and the dogs have to be licensed, hopefully within 15 days or three weeks, and if there's any violation whatsoever, because I don't, I feel this person, it's very pleasant and very nice, but it's a typical case of a scofflaw who smiles at you and does nothing, and I don't trust the person. Now, I don't like him, I don't trust he'll do what he's supposed to do, so, if there's any violation whatsoever, my recommendation, my motion would be that, at that point there, seize the dogs and hopefully find another home for them.
All right, and I need you to be, I need you to be specific about the motion, that they would be, because the 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, I want that in the record, sir.
Well, I'm just going ahead and saying the dog office recommendation is what I wanna put on for the motion, but also to add there, if there's any violation at all, at that point there, the dogs have to be seized and found another place.
And you are saying 30 days?
30 days max.
Is that, is that your motion, sir?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion? I will call for a second to the motion. I will call for a second to the motion. The motion dies. Mr. Bessie?
So, here's, here's my motion, I don't, I don't agree with the 60 days, I don't agree with the 30 days, because it's already been four years. I just wanna clarify before I, that vaccination clinic, you said that was December 9th?
In Sandwich?
Town of Sandwich Rabies Clinic, Saturday, December 9th, 1:00 PM.
Town of Sandwich Rabies Clinic, Saturday, December 9th, 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, 115 Route 6A, Sandwich Fire Department, $20 for dogs, $30 for cats. That's basically it, it doesn't say dogs have to be part of that town, it doesn't say...
Okay, thank you.
No, you don't need to be a resident.
December 9th.
So, here's, here's my motion. My motion is that the dogs are vaccinated, the dogs are registered with the town by December 15th, that gives you an entire week from the day that, because the town hall is closed on the weekends, that gives you four business days after the dogs are vaccinated to get licensed. It's not a tough process, it's a piece of paper for each dog with proof of the vaccinations. That's stipulation number one. Stipulation number two is no dogs outside of the house between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. If they are walked, they're walked individually by leash to do their business outside.
The hours? What hours can we walk them?
You can't walk them between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
Can't walk the dog?
Correct. They can't be outside of the house between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. All of the complaints that we have, sir, are in the overnight hours, and it has to stop.
Okay, can you finish your motion, please?
So, 10, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, walked on a leash individually. If there are any, any violations of the stipulations, that's it. The dogs are to be seized, seized by animal control officers and found a new home.
Is that your motion, sir?
That's my motion.
Okay, I will second the motion because I have a question for you. Would you allow the dogs to be walked outside to do their business on leash between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, in the backyard on leash?
Well, I can't, I can't guarantee that there's gonna be no barking between the 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, and that's my concern.
Okay, thank you, that was just a question.
Yes.
Okay, you have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion on the motion?
Could I make one, I'm sorry, just with the no walking between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, God forbid there was some sort of, you know, emergency with the dogs, and, you know, meaning to go to the bathroom if they're having diarrhea, some sort of medical incident, I think it would be unfair to say that they're not allowed in the backyard between those hours on a leash individually.
That was my question, really.
So, my only concern, my only concern with that, and I understand where you're coming from, but my only concern is controlling of the noise. It's not so much them doing their business, because, God forbid, it's 2:00 AM and the dogs are being walked, and they see an animal run and they start running wild with barking, now, so that's my, that's my concern.
I think in conjunction with that, using the, the bark collars, whether it's the citronella one, it's the electric collars, whatever it is, you know, that he has available to use would certainly limit that possibility. I, there's no guarantee for anything, but I think if they're, the biggest complaints are that the dogs are in the front yard barking, so I think if the dogs were to start barking in the backyard, is it ideal? No, but I also think it would be unfair to say that they can't step foot outside the house between those hours.
So, I will amend my motion to allow for the dogs to be walked in the backyard individually, not all three at one time, but we also need to add in there, the, the bark collars need to be worn at all times outside of the house, inside the house, if the dogs wanna bark, I mean, if it was my dogs, I would wanna make sure they're not barking inside, because I'd like some peace and quiet, too, as the owner, so, as long as the bark, the bark collars are, are worn, then going to do the business at night, I get it if you're working late, coming home at 1:00 AM, then the dogs need to go out, but.
I, is that, that's your amended motion?
Yes.
Then I will, I will second your amended motion. So, to recap, by December 15th, the dogs have to have had all inoculations, they have to have been registered with the Town of Wareham, they may not be outside between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM unless they are walked individually with a bark collar on and in the backyard, okay? They will at all times when they're outside have a bark collar on, and if this order has not been complied with, and I think we have to, in your motion, I think we have to continue to deem the dogs nuisance dogs, am I correct, Mr. Bowen? Yeah, so that the dogs need to continue to be deemed nuisance dogs. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, that's my second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven? Mr. Chadwick?
No.
And myself, yes. Okay, let's try again. I guess I would ask.
I'm gonna.
Yes, sir.
One way that juries will sometimes break these sorts of dev locks is to go through the individual items, figure out which ones you agree to, and then come back and address the ones where you disagree. So, if I, if I may, and my memory may be faulty, I'll list them off.
I have them written down, sir.
Well, so, I'd try the first one being the bark collar, be it electronic or citronella, and I'd, I'd just see if you could get a, a vote on that one, to start with that.
Okay.
He already.
So, the bark collars on at all times outside.
Outdoors, yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
And myself, okay.
Okay, so you have that one.
How about no outdoors between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM unless the dog is individually walked with a dog collar and not let loose? In other words, the dog is out there to do his thing, her thing.
Yes.
What do you mean by let loose?
They must be on a leash at all times, in the backyard, I forgot that, in the backyard, and with the bark collar on in order for them to relieve themselves in, at, between those hours.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, that's two for, the dogs at all times must be walked individually on a leash.
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
24/7?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
And myself, yes, okay. I guess I should've been more specific on that one. When they are outside, being walked on a leash, whatever time it is, they must have a bark collar on.
You already verified that.
And, I did?
Yep.
All right.
That was number one.
Well, it was one, number one, but, okay, I just wanna make sure that it's the 24/7. I will go with the December 15th deadline for vaccination and registering the dogs with the Town of Wareham.
Can you explain my reasoning for that?
One second.
Yes.
My question to Jared would be, are you sure they can get this done? You're looking at something up, you know, it's holiday season.
That's.
That's their problem.
No, no, it's not because you're telling them to go to a particular place.
So, can I?
Yeah.
All right. I, I gotta say, the, the thing here, listen, I understand it fully, 60 days, some people may not agree with that, but honestly, we have Christmas coming up, prices of everything has skyrocketed, everything has gone up except for our pay, all right? So, honestly, I, I couldn't even come up with an extra $240 in the next two weeks. You have Christmas coming up.
You have Christmas coming up. You want to be able to supply your family the joy and the fun of everything around Christmas time. And that's why I'm saying 60 days. And, and I put the harsh, you know, the harsh, you know, realization on it. But at the same time, I still don't want them to have to be like, crap, we can't have Christmas this year because we have to do this right now. So, that, that's my biggest thing. Or whatever holidays you guys...
Okay, so we're going to go back to the...
January 10th.
Well, let's finish with the December 15th.
Today, today's the 28th?
December 15th?
December, no.
And myself, yes. So, that's a deadlock, okay?
That fails.
I'll try, I think that covers it except, oh, and that they would be seized, they will be deemed nuisance dogs. Want to try for a different deadline?
January 10th.
January 10th?
Come back to me.
Okay.
No.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion is...
The motion is I move to approve all conditions that were approved by majority vote of the board.
Is there a second to my motion? Is any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
No.
And myself, yes. It is so. You will receive a letter tomorrow. The timeframe is very specific. And if you do not comply with these, the dogs will be seized. Do you understand that, sir? Were moved from your home. Do you understand that?
I understand, but I also...
Yes or no, sir? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, but I have to respond because...
No, you don't, sir. Thank you. You will be getting that order tomorrow. You'll get a copy of it, ma'am. Thank you.
All right.
All right. The next thing on the agenda, please. Mr. Chadwick, we have some seasonal liquor license extensions.
All right.
That's it?
That's it, sir.
Thank you.
I move to approve all three seasonal...
Please do not be speaking until you have left the room because we can hear you. Thank you so much. Try again.
I move to approve all three seasonal liquor license extensions for the following. Sterling Golf Management, Inc., DBA, Little Harbor Golf Course, Ave., One Little Harbor Road, Wareham. Next will be the seasonal liquor license extension for Project Half Shell, Inc., DBA, Cohog Republic, 197 Onset Ave., Onset. Next one would be the seasonal, seasonal liquor license extension to Main Street, Deli, DBA, Onset Beach Patio and Grill, 182 Onset Ave., Onset.
Is there a second to that motion made in second? Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve those seasonal liquor license extensions? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. One more motion, please, sir?
Yes, I move to, wow, I move to, on the...
Confirm the vote.
Yes, to confirm the vote regarding trash fees for the upcoming vote as presented by the town administrator under his report of November 21st. Well, it wouldn't be 2023.
No, it would be 20, it would be 2023, yeah.
It'd be 2023, not 2013.
Right. And the motion that he, the suggestion he made and that we voted on was to keep the fees exactly the same as they are this year. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to confirm that vote, hearing?
Question for you?
Yep.
Did he say the fees were going to stay the same?
Yes, he did.
Or was he going to make an adjustment?
No, he's going, they're going to stay the same.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. 400, and I will ask for an adjournment motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Not debatable. We'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Sure.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.